I call this special board of finance meeting to order March twenty first, two thousand and twenty three, seven oh four P M. All members are present, whether in person or via Zoom. First order of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes. No, no, I got the wrong thing. April eleventh, as we can communicate with someone. We call this special meeting. Order April eleventh, two thousand and twenty three. Seven oh four P M. First order of business, approval of regular meeting minutes from March twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. Do you have a motion?
The move?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say hi.
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 Opposed, abstained, carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four budget. All right, good evening, everyone. It's good to be here for another year. Okay, so what I was gonna do, we have two meetings before our public hearing, and I want to make sure all of your questions are answered and that there's a very good understanding of the budget. Kim's gonna be with me both times. What we're gonna do is we're gonna kind of take this opportunity to run through as much as we possibly can. We're gonna start with the operational side of it, and then we'll get into the budget, you know, literally line by line. Oh, we lost people. And then we'll get through into capital plan. So if you guys want to get out your books, we're gonna start right on page one of the three of the draft. And there you go.
Is this the long one or right one?
This is correct.
Okay. Can you blow it up?
There.
Where is it in the screen here?
Is it? He's one of three? Yep. And that's where we're gonna start. Okay, so right off the bat, what I'm hopefully gonna identify is a lot of the change in percentage. That's typically what I'm looking at, which is, you know, one column over from the right. It shows the percentage increase because that kind of tells the story of where we were and where we're going. Right now, I have built in a four percent increase for the staff, for the employees this year. Just so you guys have a little idea of what that actually means. One percent for salaried employees at Town Hall is seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. One percent of hourly is sixty-two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Therefore, every percentage that we move that number is fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. So if something's about four percent, that's usually just a payroll. That's just represents the increase. So we're gonna start off with that exact line on salaries that just represents the increase of four percent. Next line is an increase of fifty percent. We did pretty well with grants this year, and it's the expectation that I can do just as well next year and actually better. So that's gonna result, it represents two percent of all grants that were given. The next is the selectmen's office, which is eleven point eight three. There is an increase in staff.
Patrick?
Yes. Say that again?
You slow down a little?
I'd love to.
Okay.
Actually, I have another, I have another disclaimer also. There's two things that we're not gonna talk about.
No, 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 I had a question.
Oh, I thought you were just wanted me to go slower. Okay, go ahead.
What's in selectments? I was trying to look back to the breakdown in selectman salaries, but I couldn't. I didn't.
It will be the first line or the first section. It is literally by salary. Under selectman salary, it should be page one of the details. So under tab six, the first page.
Yeah.
Then order something as well.
I'm sorry, this is, yeah, it's, it's Russ, Kim and myself.
Yeah, I is this page that says one hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight?
Correct.
Okay, so how does that break down? That's what I was looking for.
It's, is it seven thousand each of them, I believe, though? But now it's gonna be increased, so you have, it's gonna be a percentage of all. It's not a generic number anymore.
You lost me.
No, we're gonna get that number for you.
Okay, so the break in is, Patrick is ninety-three, four oh four. And Kim and Russ at eight thousand sixty-two dollars apiece. For a total of one oh nine, five twenty-eight.
So the selectman salaries are also going up four percent?
Yeah, it goes up a little bit more because we're trying to bring Kim, since she was a new selectman. We want her and Russ to be at the same salary level, so she was like a hundred dollars less coming into this budget go around, so we just wanna
Okay.
Bring her up to the same as.
Four, basically each have a four percent increase.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I should say, and we're down to selectmen's office, but there are, next meeting on the eighteenth, I want to run through this, but the next meeting on the eighteenth. I've invited the Board of Education back, the Region Twelve, to discuss their increase since they talked to us the last time. That was brought up at my Board of Selectmen meeting by Russ, because after they had presented it, there was this another full-time equivalent added. You may have seen that in voices. So they're gonna come and explain that. Additionally, we're gonna have Jimmy Pearlbutt, who's kind of our I T. He's gonna go through all the software. You're gonna see there's a lot of software upgrades bringing us up to snuff, so I'm gonna kind of table those, that discussion till next week, or yeah, next Tuesday. And there are a few employees that have special exemptions. We will go into executive session next week for that. So we'll talk about those specific topics, because I figure with the software, Jimmy's gonna explain it better than us. And I'd rather have this opportunity tonight to just go through all the numbers. Good? Okay, so that's where Selectmen's Office comes in. Finance Director, three point one one. Treasurer is up thirteen point five six. There's some additional hours in there plus an increase. There is a lot of stuff going that we're putting through, through finance. There's a lot of projects going on, and I feel like I'm driving Kim a little crazy because there's more projects than we've ever done, and a lot of grants and follow-up that needs to be done.
Those are two positions, one person, right?
There are, no, there's also an Assistant Treasurer in that line.
No, the big increase in the treasurer is hours and salary for the assistant, an increase for my assistant.
Is part of that line yours though, too?
Yes, the treasurer position, yeah, which is, there is no, just a standard increase.
Because she, Kim is both the treasurer and finance director.
Right.
And then there's Assistant Treasurer as well. Town Clerk, the additional fees there are for software upgrades. That's why when I saw that line, I thought I'd let you know that we're gonna be talking about that next week. Tax Collector, there's a couple extra hours in that five point one one increase. The Assessor, we do have an Assessor in Training, Jamie. She has some additional hours in this, as well as every time she completes a course towards her certification, she gets an increase, so that's built into that as well. Board Assessment feels is pretty flat, looking at the number. And then Board of Finance, there is an increase, and that's salary-based. It's not a whole lot of money, you could see. Building Department is flat, as well as Probate Court, which we buy into. Similar to Animal Control. Postage and delivery went up just because postage, postage fees have gone up now. Going up again. And then Town Hall, that is a big number. That's, that is the clerk, that's data processing support. There's an increase in their salary increase as well. The last, the next line is very speculative at this point. It's a nine point three four increase for elections. There is still pending litigation, and we still have no firm guidance. It looks like it could be ten to fourteen days with Saturday and Sunday that we have to man polling stations. So that may have to, we may have to come back to Board of Finance based on what that legislation brings. The Auditor is a flat fee. It's pretty much stayed a flat fee, moving, you know, staying, that's for RICO. And then legal fees went up twenty percent because we've had, they have had an increase, Gale and that firm. Animal Control, just their normal increase. We'd had a reduction, what, two years ago, because we were off? And then Town Report are basically gonna stay flat. Then we get on to Boardings and Commissions. We have two increases in that land use compensation. And that, well, zoning. Then our next line is Planning, again, just a small line. So these are all our commissions. You can see zoning has a reduction of ten point eight nine. That's because they're planning a little less publications, reduced advertising. Zoning Board of Appeal stays flat, as well as conservation. Inland Wetlands, sixty-one, ten. That is adding consultants. If you've been on the wetlands meetings now, they've reached out to some cult consultants. There's been some more things going on with inland wetlands. It's the exciting meeting if you've never been to it. We have another two thousand and four volunteer recognition. That's gonna stay flat. And Historic District Commission went up a little bit, just for postage and stuff. Actually, it stayed flat. It's just over what they've used. Historic Buildings has stayed flat. And Senior Center, just a small increase, two point five three. Senior Center Programs, thirty-eight, four ninety, up one point three six. This is for their programs, so you'll see an equal figure of this on the revenue side. So when they run a program, they collect fees for it, and that's there to offset that. The Library is up three point one four, and I know they came already, so that makes a little bit sense. And then Library Other represents the benefit line for them.
So Patrick, did you just put in what they asked for?
We did. We made no adjustment to what they presented to you. Correct. Okay. Lake Lilinona, that is a cap, they're trying to increase their capital. And, you know, we had kind of gone through this last year, where they're trying to get an additional boat, some extra shifts on that, but that's the Lake Lilinona Authority. We pay fifty percent of the other towns that are on the lake, but obviously we have the smallest portion. After School Arts Program is staying flat. Recreation has gone up twenty percent. Now that we've taken a bit of a step back from COVID, they have more events planned, more movie nights, so there was an increase with that. Last line down is Swimming Pond Improvements. Kim and I had talked about this. We used to have the swimming pond off River Road. Years, that's been on the line. I thought that it was a little kind of crazy to have it there when we have no intentions of redoing that, and it would take hundreds of thousands of dollars to rebuild that, let alone to control the water and do that period testing every day. It's just, it's not feasible. So what we decided to do was just take that line and move it into the Town Parks line for maintenance. So we can still use it, we can still cover it. I wanted to add some extra dollars towards Sherman Park, because I'd like to see that get better. So we're kind of just removing that line, because swim ponds seems irrelevant. Okay. Now we're on to Public Works and Salary. We had very little overtime this year, which was just not a very snowy year, but our budget was up point eight nine percent. Town Pave Roads, five point one five. The Winter Maintenance, you're gonna see it under T R and U T R. There's two separate lines. One's unimproved town roads, and the other is town roads. Those two increases, the thirty-one and the twenty, are just material costs. And then we have regular maintenance for process, which is eight point three six for the unimproved roads. Town Garage and Salt Barn, down a little. M O R E, anybody know what M O R E stands for? I want to make sure you're paying attention.
No idea.
Maintenance or repair expense. So what this is, is fuels, tires. We actually do an inventory of all what we think the trucks will need. And that's what more represents. So we do have increased product, especially tires and things, so that represents a sixteen percent increase. Surveyors are staying the same, trees are staying the same. And then you'll see down below, that's the Town Park line that we added moving swimming ponds to. But this Town Parks is cleaning, the parking lot, the septic tank, which we just have to have everything emptied out this week by a bit of an emergency this weekend. So that's included in that line as well. Onto Protection. We have our, an increase of nine point four four. There's a couple things that we looked at with math this year. They, we are adding in a two hundred and fifty dollar clothing allowance, similar to that we do to Public Works. And also, we've added six holidays. So you don't necessarily have to work on the holiday, because obviously people want to work when they can make more and they can work on the holiday, because we kind of play with their shifts a little bit. You'll get paid for the holiday if you work that week, whether you're on that holiday or not. And we are mirroring this from the Bridgewater Policy. State Police went down a little bit. And then there's, of course, the private duties, public hire, Town Police, that again would be offset by any revenue we collect. I think we all are familiar with the ambulance paramedic at ninety-eight thousand one forty-seven and ninety-six point two seven percent increase. Fire Department, as they had said, went down three point two seven. Fire Marshal slightly up, and insurance bonds went down. We get down to, well, lights on metered services flat. Civil preparedness, local emergency, this, because we're not spending what we did, COVID's kind of going away. We're not spending nearly the money, so we've reduced that number just a little bit. And then nine-one-one system has stayed flat. Health and Welfare, you know, visiting nurse, it stayed flat, vital stats stayed flat. Municipal Agent, Social Services, Veterans Coordinator, and also nonprofits. So the money that we donate, that's all included in that line. Elderly Disability, Disabled Services Transport, we have some additional drivers with that. That represents fourteen point three two percent. Newtown Health District has a slight increase of three point five six, and Transfer Station went down. We do have an increase in tipping fees, but we were able to negotiate a reduction in hauling fees for an overall reduction of two point three percent, one oh three percent. We've been doing a lot of negotiating lately. We've saved a lot of money, which is great. Okay, so next page of page three. Insurance Benefits, the Personal Benefits is Teamsters, and then these are just all based on payroll increases. And then we go into miscellaneous. Land Acquisition is gonna be flat this year. Ordnance Application, Copiers, all those numbers are basically gonna stay flat. So then we get down to a Total Operating Budget, Proposed. Four million one hundred and seventy-five thousand five sixty-six or six point four four. You guys will see down the road later this evening, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is up four point six two. So the total is six of five million two ninety-six, nine thirty-nine. We can see Region Twelve, the new numbers in there, so our overall budget is an increase of three point six four percent, or four hundred and thirty thousand.
Patrick, can I ask you a question about salaries?
Yes.
Where do we stand compared to our neighboring towns in what we pay? And then again, our four percent increase, where does that stand compared to what our neighboring towns should do?
Um. You know, lately I've had a lot of, like, LinkedIn things that come on, and the state's hiring, and there's a lot of competition. So we're seeing a lot of increased salaries for new hires, so people are moving around a lot. Towns right now are having a tough time finding anyone. A couple weeks ago, there was an article in Litchfield Times that Winstead had lost several people. I know last year Litchfield was looking for an Assessor, and they had posted it at like ninety-seven thousand dollars. They couldn't find anybody. They have somebody that works one day a week that gets fifty thousand dollars a year now, just to basically officiate what legally needs to be done. So yeah, it is very important that we take care of our people. I would say we're doing pretty well. But each position is different, and based on how they turn and what the need is, you can find things, you know, a lot higher for the same jobs that they're doing, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I want to be sure we're not putting ourselves at risk. I know we've got very loyal, long-term employees.
Correct, and that's for you guys to decide. I yeah, I'll just say, Washington, I just kind of found out that they're at five percent. We're at four. Oh, I'm sorry, they're at six percent. We were at six percent last year when they were at five. We were six percent last year, now we're at four. There was, Connecticut Counciling Municipalities put out a survey about a month ago, because I thought that was an important thing, and out of the towns reporting, most of them, I think the median was, you know, two point seven five percent. There's a lot of towns that are contractually obligated because they're union in their town hall. So they're stuck at a two percent or two and a half percent, and I guarantee those are the people that are gonna be leaving and moving to something else. Just right now, we know cost of living has increased eight point nine percent.
Patrick, what is our union increase? What is?
Two and a half percent to my, to my best recollection, it was two and a half this year for the next three years. It was four point seven five, the first year, two and a half each additional year for the next three.
And that applies to Public Works?
That's Public Works, and that's a signed contract, so that stays until the next negotiation in two thousand and twenty-five.
So they're gonna get two and a half, and everyone else is gonna get four?
Correct. Now, I will say they have benefits that the rest of the town does not.
Right, 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 right. Um. While we're on the subject of benefits. You know, I'll ask this, I'll ask this question a different time.
Okay. Got it. Okay, so now what all that breaks down to, so now I'm gonna take you guys back to that, right where you were before, then at the tab six. You guys stop me where you need to stop me, but this is basically the breakdown of everything that we just went through, which is the rest of the pages. So you're gonna go to these. Sorry. Oh, you don't need to, that's okay. So keep it on that, go back to page one, because everybody has their books, right?
Yes.
Online. Holly, are you there, Holly? Your phone's not there anymore.
She's muted.
Yeah, she's muted, and we don't have her on a screen, but I just realized her phone is on.
There she is. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, I am following, yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Okay, perfect. So this is where the selectman breakdown was, and then we go on to the next thing, obviously, the grant procurement. Under the Selectmen, you can see part of that increase was under paychecks for outside services. That's for our H R work that we're doing. The next page, Finance Director. Dues are the Governor's Association of Accounts, under Finance Director, E P Support, that's for here, that's that thirteen thousand dollars total. The rest is basically salary. Treasurer. Under Town Clerk. We're gonna actually be changing, but again, that's a software change, I kind of have Jimmy do that, but we actually have to change our whole clerk software.
Patrick, I want to go back a second, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
On Finance Director Salary.
Yep.
Original appropriation was fifty-five thousand, but only thirty-five thousand was spent. What accounts for that difference?
We, all of these, because we're not through the year yet. This is a glimpse in time, and the year is not completed. That will get completed line.
So that's, that's the to-date number.
That's the to-date. That's the actual. So undermine Selectmen salaries for Russ, Kim and I, we're only at seventy-four thousand seven ninety-five right now.
Yeah.
So that's why we look at the original proposed, and then what the new proposed are, and then the actual falls into. But thanks for picking that up. So Finance Director will be at fifty-five, one twenty at the completion of this budget cycle.
You can't necessarily see whether, just looking at this, whether you're going over or under for the current year.
Not on this, no, not on this budget. We get budget updates throughout the year, like quarterly. Yeah, they go through all the boards and stuff, so there are some, like, you know, overtime, like even because we had a lot of replenishment money for the police department, we've been running way under for those. So honestly, we can add shifts, and we can play with that money a little bit more, and try and utilize what we can, because we're kind of behind the eight ball. We didn't run the shifts we should have in the earlier year, plus the credits we had. So you'll see some of those. But then at the end of that, if we don't use it, it ends up in the undesignated fund balance at the end of the year. That's the increase. Okay, so then Treasurer, we're on to Town Clerk, is where I left off before. Again, Tax Collector, hourly salary. There'll be huge changes there. The Assessor, your increases are basically, okay, so that's a good example. So if you're on, Bruce, on page eight.
Okay.
Assessor hourly, the first digits lying down, way under, you can see that we're way under. That's because Jamie had a child. She was out on maternity, so that's gonna be one of those lines that we're not gonna fill that budget line.
But anywhere you see salary, the word salary, that is a fixed amount.
Yep.
So it's divided over twenty-six payrolls, and those, those lines are what they are. There's no overtime.
All right. And then D P Support, everything else pretty looks good there. Again, stop me if you need to. Board Assessment Appeals hasn't used any money, and then they just have a slight increase. That's because they're working on what they're doing now. Board of Finance. There is a consultants line in there. You haven't used any consultants, but feel free, because that's there for you. Building Department was just a four percent increase right through. Mileage, everything else is really flat. South Ferry Probate Court, again, flat. Postage Delivery, we had talked about that before, expected increase. Then we get to Town Hall. There's Clerk hourly, there's actually, there's one great reduction. I just want to point this out. You look under Town Hall Telephone, if you can see, we went from the fourteen thousand eight ninety-two to an actual of seventy-three, fourteen. We're doing a reduction in that. That's because Kim is canceling lines that we don't use, like old fax lines. We're literally work every line, and thank you, Kim, for
Frontier, Frontier has gone up like fifty percent in there.
Another line that I'd like you to pay attention to is Town Hall Maintenance Contracts line. It's line number seventeen. If you'll notice, there's a big reduction in that as well, right? That's because Public Works is gonna be doing a lot of their maintenance.
Oh, good.
So they've been really stepping up to the plate. It's nice to see. Outside Services, and then the Town Hall D P Support also includes like all of our memberships to like Costco and Amazon Prime and Staples, the Crystal Rock that we get for water. That's all included in that. Okay, next. Again, we're looking at hourly increases here, which may, based on what the ruling is. Uh, again, we're looking at hourly increases here, uh, which may, based on what the ruling is by the state, they go up again. Um, and then they also, uh, included some extra money under, uh, supplies uh, for, uh, uh, a lot of the stuff that they, they just have to replace it in forever. And there's just some supplies that we need. But that literally is heading all legislation as it comes to Harvard. Uh, the auditor is the next page. That stays flat.
Patrick, when, when do we, uh, do we approve the auditor every year?
Do we what?
Do we have to approve the hiring of, of the auditor every year?
I think we're, Bruce, we're in the third year of, uh, we're in the second year, three-year contract.
Okay, we were a three-year contract.
We have one, we have one year left.
Yeah, I remember I was on board.
Last time we had to vote on it. Yeah. Yeah.
Pat, Pat, Patrick?
Yes.
Um, wouldn't it be more straightforward to just put in what you think the maximum might be on these elections rather than having to come back to us? Because it, it can't be that much money. So why don't you put in what you think the, the maximum would cost? And if, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Okay.
I think we kind of did that in the net.
We got a lot of extra money in there, but.
I did, I did talk to the registrar voters and, and that, the hourly money plus, uh, all of the supplies they may or may not need.
Patrick has, Patrick had said that he might have to come back to us.
If it goes to fourteen days with the weekends and based on what the hours are going to be that they're working, remember, we have, we have no ruling on this. So we have it kind of estimated, but we don't.
I understand. I, I'm, I'm now more confused. Do, uh, do we put all the money in or do we not put all the money in?
I think more should be put in personally, but we don't know what the hours are going to be.
Well, then this is, this, this would be the time to add to it then. I mean, we did this budget, you know, maybe a month and a half ago. I mean, we're talking maybe two months ago. And at that time, uh, we did not have this information that Patrick is telling me tonight. So.
You know, on the other hand.
But, but that budget, but that budget there is fairly padded based upon, you know, if, if the school budget doesn't pass, do we have to have multiple? You know, the hour, the hours in there are, I, I personally think there's enough. But, um, even, even if the state comes down and says, you gotta have people here different times of the day for two weeks. You know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna need five or 10 people sitting here doing nothing. You know, you're probably gonna have both of the registrars working, I, I would assume.
Yeah.
And, and I think we have enough. I, I personally think we have enough money for that.
Plus we're as, as a board can allocate up to twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Per year, per apartment.
You can take money out of contingency.
And we have, yeah, we have thirty-three thousand in the contingency fund and we're gonna, that's, that's still there.
We did add extra money for all the supplies. That's all built in.
Yep. But that's something we can probably discuss more at the next meeting.
Sure.
Of course. I'll tell you what, we will have, um, I will have a breakdown of how many hours. And we'll plan out a max of the fourteen days. But again, I don't know how many hours they're going to want us open for during the day. You know, the last thing I heard is they're talking about like a ten to six kind of thing. Um, but then if not, now we're going to need two, two crews. So it's still fluid. I'll be honest. Um, we are to legal fees, um, on page seventeen, if that's good. Uh, there is one, uh, larger reduction. You'll see down in inland wetlands. Um, there was a lot of legal fees back in twenty twenty-one and that was really the, the woods. Um, and all that discussion was going on. So that's kind of a reduction for that. Everything else basically stayed flat. Uh, animal control, again, just what we, uh, buy in, uh, to the, cause it's regional, Bridgewater, New Milford and Roxbury. And then town reports nominal fees. Tab seven. Land use compensation is all salary based. This is for Karen and Julie. Uh, and then after planning, there's no staff there, obviously. So not much change in the numbers at all. Actually, there is, there's a hundred dollars in for training, uh, additional. You know, they have to do that, new training now. Um, zoning. There is a line for zoning and I have a note here, um, but we're going to talk about it. We're, our zoning regulations, getting them online like we did for the general, with general code. Um, we're going to be adding money to have that put online. But that's going to come up in the capital. Zoning Board of Appeals, no flat. Conservation flat. Inland wetlands. Um, this is what I had mentioned before, that consulting line. Now you actually get to see where it is, four thousand dollars proposed. Voluntary recognition stays flat. Storage district stays flat. Storage buildings stay flat. So this is kind of like where that breakdown. So if you have any questions about where that breakdown of each, each category is, kind of just goes over that. Uh, senior center. Nothing was really flagging it, uh, with me as well, but if there's anything you'd like to go over, please let me know. Only a slight increase. It was three, three percent. Uh, and then senior center programs. Go ahead.
How's the elevator, Patrick?
I don't know what you guys know yet. Um, we, uh, went down in the hole, uh, underneath my, my foreman and I went in the hole and it's not nearly as bad as we thought. There is some, uh, rust on the pipe, um, that goes into the ground. So we're going to have, uh, some kind of scientist come out and rate the pipe, see if that's impaired in any way. Other than that, um, there is leaking when it rains heavy that came through. We can see in the pit where it comes through. Um, and there's actually a, a, a hole that can be dug out where the concrete would not, wasn't poured, that you can put a sub pump in. Um, so we can pipe that outside. We have power down there. We're going to, uh, thorough seal or waterproof all inside of it, hydraulic cement, uh, all the seams. And then we're also planning on doing some, uh, grading on the outside of the building. So we don't have that pond in the front of the building, which is causing the problem. So it's not nearly the complete rebuild that was expected. Um, it's a lot better than what we thought. There was a, a little, it was easier than we thought.
Great.
Nice work. But I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. If we're going to do this, um, actually just, I was showing Ted, uh, earlier today. You know, we, we took on that loft project in, uh, Public Works last Wednesday. I worked down there and, uh, Paul Swanson and I, uh, built the second floor at Public Works. It's pretty exciting. It's nice. Um, so a lot of the things that we're taking on ourselves that we can do, hopefully. Great. Um, okay. Library budget is the next page.
Patrick, it's Holly. Before, um, so when, when Jen, um, appeared before us and had her list of things, you know, between, you know, new kitchen, new refrigerator, new, a whole lot of things. Where does that actually show up?
You're not, you're, but we will get to that, but remember this is, all we're doing now is the operating budget. That's going to fall under the capital.
Right.
And I'll tell you what, the capital is a lot more fun than this. That's why I'm kind of flying through it because, and I want to answer your questions as we go along. Uh, but that's where, remember like all the asks that people came in with the capital requests, that all comes together on the capital plan.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Understood.
Thank you.
Uh, Lake Illinois Authority, we already discussed the capital improvement. Um, after school program stays flat. Recreation, uh, has a slight increase. And then there's of course the swim pond got deleted. Uh, public works overtime, you know, basically flat. Uh, there was, uh, actually looking down at it and remember when we get grant work and everything, uh, if you're looking at town roads, page, page thirty-eight. Uh, if you look under, this is a good one to see, Bruce, under actual, under, uh, paid other expenses, there's a ten thousand, one fifteen. Do you see that? It's towards the bottom. It's the last line before the total. So that is actually the paving from Squire Road when we did the bridge. I understand that it's an offset because we got a grant to pay for that, but you'd still see it on this line. Uh, but everything else is, as far as, uh, figures, they're pretty much the same. Um, obviously, uh, town roads, it's an increase in, in, in material product on salt and sand. Again, material increases represent the increases on town roads, unimproved. Unimprove rate with your maintenance. Again, material increases. And then town garage and salt farm. All the work that we're doing, this is maintenance stuff, um, as opposed to the capital expense stuff that we're doing, you know, off the grants and the money that we signed last year. So none of that comes out of this fund. Okay. And then we are on to maintenance or repair expense for the trucks. And something I learned is the last three digits of that account number is the truck number. So if you want to know what number each truck was, uh, like where it says, uh, Paul, Mike, Corey, Todd, that's truck number six, seven, eight, ten. Just to let you know. Uh, but these are expected, uh, repairs that we would have. Um, the one that went drastically down is Corey's truck, truck number eight. That's the truck that we just rebuilt. So obviously has a reduction in expectations. Uh, the next page that continues. Again, about the same. Um, tires, we're expecting that to be thirteen thousand. That's the big, the big chunk out of that. Um, and then, uh, survey engineer. So this was for surveying of all town properties, you know, transfer station, town hall, public courts that we've been working on. And then tree maintenance. Were at fifty thousand. Which is actually offset by grants as well.
And you've shifted so much of that, right? Back on Eversource.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we did lose them for a while. Um, I had them coming back in February and then we had that big storm. Uh, and Gotion declared state of emergency. Um, they had, they had actually activated, uh, the Public Works Mutual Aid Program. So we offered to send people up. Um, John Field had, uh, was our Demis, uh, Region Five Director. Um, had a big crew coming out of Woolworth. So we were basically on standby. Um, they had what they needed, but, uh, there was so much damage in the North End and State in the ice. That all the crews went up there.
Right.
So they were working. So now they're back. As a matter of fact, I just saw them working on Davenport Road today. And I know they hit stuff like Painter Hill and they're going to keep kind of working around town.
But there's a, a lot of orange tape.
Scraping, yeah, it's scraping everything.
Yeah.
All over. Uh, yep, that would be us. That would be us tagging trees. Yeah, if they can do it. Uh, and I will say, nothing, nothing. Um, we have had a lot of truck, trees taken down by our own local guys. Um, there's been issues. If it's not something that Eversource is going to take care of, we just have to do the right thing. I'm not going to put the safety of our town.
Well, these last two or three storms where the winds have been so high, we've not lost cable or power, not even for a second. Well, it's such a good, you know, it's the master of it. Good work you're doing.
Um, okay. So Bruce, I'm going to point out one more for you. We're on page forty-eight. Police town hourly. This is where I was looking where we've only spent forty-six thousand out of the one seventy-one because we haven't fulfilled the shifts that we needed to. Um, I average or budget twelve shifts, uh, per week for our guys. Now that we have David Buck, we're actually achieving that now finally. Uh, so we were a little late to the punch, uh, but now we're going to start utilizing that. That police presence is important to me. Um, and then everything else basically stays flat.
Have there been, um, more incidents with respect to the police being required to make a call or?
Not necessarily. No, I wouldn't say that there are. Um, but I think we see it in traffic and reckless driving and some of the other things. Um, you know, I, it seems like a lot, until today, somebody had let me know that there was, uh, and, you know, somebody had checked their car to see if it was unlocked. Somebody came by and checked their car. I just heard about that today and that's something we haven't heard of in the last couple of months. Um, so now that we're getting this summer and it's getting nicer out, you know, let's hopefully, the police force that we have is going to have a good representation to, you know, show people that, you know, we, we're on, we're on it.
Patrick, it gives me a lot of mailboxes down.
Okay. So yeah, there was, um, uh, several, um, and that was vandals that were going around with bats hitting down mailboxes. Um, it all happened one Saturday night and they hit quite a few.
So much fun.
Yeah.
We find out who they are?
No, no, the police are aware. I talked to them. There were several people that called up. We know the night that it happened. Um, and it was just complete vandals. There's some people out having a good time, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Um, next is the, uh, police state salary. Uh, you'll see that's a zero on the state police line. Uh, that's because that's paid yearly. Uh, emergency services stays the same, town private duty. That's captured from private hire. So that's a captured revenue, much like senior center programs. And then we're on to the, uh, paramedic contract, which is incredible. But it is what it is. Um, the fire department and their expenses. And then fire marshal, we have an increase there as well. So. Um, on to insurance and bonds. We actually show a reduction on that middle line. Um, you'll see, uh, liability insurance. That's because it was overestimated on the cyber policy. So we were able to reduce that to be more actual. And then we have some money in there for streetlights. We don't use all that much. Um, civil preparedness, I had mentioned this before, where we're just kind of not using the money for civil preparedness. So that is mask, special protection, uh, plexiglass sanitizer with signage, all that stuff came out of that box. And then the nine-one-one system is flat again this year. Uh, visiting nurse, uh, that is an estimation of fifty hours. That's why it's unutilized now, but we allow that money to be there in case we need to utilize it. Uh, vital city statistics is going to stay flat at five hundred. And then we have municipal agent in her salary. And then you'll see that, uh, under dues, that ninety-nine, uh, sixty-five, that's all the different organizations that we help. Like Greenwood's and all those other wonderful organizations that we do. Um, we have the welfare line. It's just another thousand dollars kind of an offset. That's to, uh, for resident. Which we do help a lot of. I'm happy and proud of that. Uh, Newtown Health District, uh, just a sm- marginal increase. And under elderly disabled, uh, disabled services, uh, the transport line for our drivers that increase.
So by example, an elderly person has a doctor's appointment.
Correct.
And then.
Yep.
We provide that.
Yep.
That's really, I didn't know.
So we have the Honda Aussie van.
Okay.
And then we have the wheelchair accessible bus.
All right, okay.
What? Five drivers?
One, two, three, four.
Dave. There you go.
Is this all administered by the senior center?
Gerald, municipal agent kind of organizes this. And then a lot of scheduling is done with Sarah.
You call there to book here.
Okay. Do we have volunteers as well? Like, kind of a bit like?
No, they're, they're employees.
Those are employees.
Employees, yeah. So they get paid for that time. And they're great. Honestly, all of them are fantastic. They're wonderful. Um, and then transfer station. Basically flat. From budget to budget side. But this is where we had the Holly field, when Holly fees went down to fees, but. Uh, insurance benefits. Personal benefits. And then these are again, extensions of payroll increase. Land acquisition fund stays flat. Gordon's qualification stays flat. Copyers backs, maintenance contracts stays flat. And the computer upgrades that got zeroed out. We moved that to, uh, more of a continuing. We moved that to uh more of a continuing appropriation, so you're gonna see that on the capital side. Uh and we still have on the next line, that's where you're gonna see the thirty-three thousand dollar contingency. So if we need to go back without changing the buck, but you have that money available. Memorial Day is eleven hundred dollars. And there's missing wings. Next tab, it's full budget. Which we know. Okay. Kind of breeze through that kind of quick. Are there any questions on any of that? Any of our expenses? Uh Bruce is muted, but I saw him laugh for a second. Are you good?
Uh yeah, I've memorized it all.
All right, excellent, excellent. I I don't want to take away the value. I I, you know, I've I've gone through this book. I don't, I I can't even tell you how many dozens of times I've gone through this book. So if I fly through, I already understand most of the stuff, so this is for you to stop me. Um, I think the, should we go to, you wanna go to capital next? Sure. This is the exciting one. Okay, so there you go. You're gonna have to blow that up though. That's section three. I'm sorry, yeah, section three, we're on the uh capital improvement plan, Town of Roxbury Capital Improvement Plan, and this gets voted on just like the budget. It's gonna be all public record. Once you guys approve it, then it'll also be public record for the new budget. Okay. I'm just gonna wait for Paul to get back seated.
Here.
Yeah, three. And we can follow along. Okay, so just a a brief explanation of what's going on here if you're unfamiliar. Um that first green section is the budget from last year. Next line is the balance. Gross, then what we would receive in grants. What we're looking at and voting on is the net. So the second green column is what our budget is for capital improvements for this year. So the first line being the accessory revaluation, um that's just continuing appropriation uh for that fee when it happens. Uh the next one is town hall IT upgrades, and I'm gonna lump town hall IT and security technology upgrades. Those are all IT upgrades. Uh we do have grants on some of that, uh but I am gonna default to Jimmy to explain because there are several different programs. Uh the town clerk vault upgrade is in here. Uh we've reached a point in the town vault that we have no more record keeping and all our bins are filled and now we're ready to the next, move up to the next level and get more boxes and bins and new storage facilities. Uh so that's included with that. Uh the next line again is soft software upgrades, so I'm gonna default on that.
Patrick, can I?
Yes.
Patrick, it's Holly. Can I just ask on the vault, on the storage, the vault upgrade? What, what do we have? Do we store anything in the cloud?
Not, okay, so this storage is the document storage in the clerk's office specifically. So when you have a deed, every property record that dates back to nineteen, to seventeen ninety-four is there in volumes. And at a certain point, you run out of space. We've run out of space. Yep.
I get that. I I guess what is, say, I mean, I hate to say this, but um what if town hall catches on fire? I mean, is the vault fireproof? Is it?
Oh, my gosh, yeah, that whole side is all concrete and there's a giant door and it gets closed every night. Um but that's literally the history of the town. It's quite amazing.
Right.
Like, you know, I I had weird story. Um I I felt like my house was haunted and I wanted to trace the history and of who owned my house. And they said there was a fire in my house, which changed the date, so I literally went through all the board selectman meetings back in the thirties uh to see if any money was given to um to fix that house because that was something they did back in the day. Uh but you, that is absolutely the most amazing room uh full of incredible documents, like, I I mean, literally deed one seventeen ninety-four is in volume one. Um it's amazing. So the clerk's responsibility is, you know, really keeper of those records. Um so that's, that's what they do. So that's why minutes and and everything are all documented there. Every annual report is in there. Uh the dates all the way back. Um it's kind of amazing.
Okay. So we're all dying.
Oh, it's totally haunted. It's totally haunted. And I proved that later down the road. It's John Humphrey, the old library, lived there like basically his whole life. His father lived across the street. That's not a budget talk. That's not a budget talk. John Humphrey still is in my house. I just, I just, he's my roommate.
To Holly's point, though, to Holly's point, does the state of Connecticut have any policy regarding the digitization of those records?
You still have to have hard copies. This is the document vault.
I understand you have the hard copies, but do you also digitize them?
Yeah, they do. They do. All of it's, yeah, all of it's cloud-based as well. And that goes into software.
If, 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 you know, the the town was bombed.
We still have a record of it.
You still have, okay, that's the.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I wouldn't say that you have every annual report on the cloud going back all the way, but all proper information now, we're up to date with information is off the cloud. Um, all right, so uh, okay, so that last line down, zoning regulations, this is where we put money into hire consultants to go through our regulations, make sure um that they're written correctly, there's not duplicate information or contradictory information which happens periodically that we found when we went through our zoning or our uh town ordinance consultation. Um Hodge Library is the next one, seventy-five hundred dollars. That's for the improvements to the windows and their their continuing projects over there.
I thought it was more.
There are library down below.
Okay.
You're, we're, this is just Hodge.
Oh, just Hodge, all right.
Patrick?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep.
Um, you skipped over my favorite line.
What is that? Procedures manual? Yeah, but there's no money being appropriated.
Okay, so uh I I I know it's become the butt of a lot of jokes, but do we not have, I know Kim has her procedures written down. Do we have, do we have anywhere written down all of our financial procedures, or do we not have them written down anywhere? That was the point, was that um before it became a running joke, um the idea was that there there needed to be, at Rico's recommendation, a manual where we had all of, I mean, some, Kim, you can come up with more examples with simple things like, you know, who opens the, I don't even know if he still opens.
The nail, the internal controls of the.
And then it was, that it was best practice for a town to have all of our financial procedures written down, so that if anyone came in and had to take it over, it was, it was done. And then it didn't get done, it didn't get done, it didn't get done. And so um one, one year Rico was gonna do it, another year I think uh Jimmy was gonna do it and Paul was gonna help him. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Um, and um, so, you know, all kidding aside, if it's something i- i- if it's something that we ought, that the town ought to have, which it seems to me we should, um, I think we should get serious about it and do it.
Um, I think we may need to, we need, may need to outsource this.
Hmm.
And I think we're gonna need to see what Washington Bridgewater, what other towns have done. Maybe there's a model we can crib, but believe me, I've asked enough.
Rico did one for Bridgewater, because that was one of the first things. This is literally edge, you'll remember. This has been going on since I think the first meeting.
Very long time.
It's been going on a long time, absolutely.
Um, and I think we got a a sample from from Bridgewater. Is that right?
Yep. I I have some, yeah, I have some of that. Because it was mostly my procedures that were actually voted on by border finance, whatever they did.
Mm-hmm.
But the rest of it has not been completed.
Well, I think we should maybe have a resolution to allocate some serious money to this.
Well, we have money there. It's just a matter of getting it done. You know, ten thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's probably. Do you think that's enough or no? For just that border finance procedures?
This is an old. This is ten, twelve years old, this number here.
It's much more like twenty or twenty-five. But I think it is a serious project that needs to be looked at. I think all, anybody in our community would agree with Nanette that, you know, we've kicked the ball or the can, whatever it is, down the road too often. And, you know, um this is where it makes auditing much easier. It takes, you know, transparency infinitely easier. Um, and I think we might discover uh methods, procedures from other communities in the state of Connecticut that could really help us. At the end of the day, I mean, I would hate to be flat-footed when somebody at a town meeting says, well, what do you mean? Nothing's written down. You know?
So, Kim, well, a lot of the process is kind of covered by state controls.
Yeah.
Yes, it's not like there's nothing there.
Right.
You know, there are rules and regulations that we have to stand true. So it's not just vague, but I would say more of your specific.
You get general procedures and the financials and all the required.
Yeah.
RSI, all that information. But the, but, but then, but the weeds of it, you know, the day in and day out, the internal controls, you know, I have, I have that down. You may not have that in some of the other offices that also handle a good amount of cash, um, you know, in any or all of them.
So, Kim, I think that that's the word that you used to use is is the word that I think we ought to focus on, which it it is the issue of what are our internal controls and are they documented and how are they documented?
Some are statutory, but some, some are just ger- germane to the town of Roxbury.
Yeah. Kim, so you you have the the Bridgewater manual?
I think I do. I I was gi- I was given a lot of different copies and examples and templates uh back in the day and I still have them. So I just gotta dig them up.
Is it, is it a lot of pages?
Um, I don't think so.
Right. If it's not too many, maybe we could kind of, if everybody, then we use it for the template.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to help. I'll come in, whatever.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, we'll have lunch.
There you go. And then I'm sure Rico's gonna have some input on this as well, and we could pay him through that line if we needed to.
Absolutely. I mean, I just, I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, he's gotta be careful, though, because he's gotta remain.
Gotcha.
But he can.
Great point, Nana.
Yeah, and, you know, Ed and I are ready to stand in anytime.
I'll let you guys decide if you want to put more money in there. That'll be your discussion. I'll just throw it out there. Um, okay, on to Public Works. Uh, number one, two thousand and seven grader. Uh so what you're seeing here is what the item is, what year it is, and then what the replacement year is on the S. That's looking at a replacement uh in two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, we've added this year truck number three and truck number four, which are Chevy dump trucks. Um, they're both fifteens, so we're projecting those uh hopefully will last twelve years. We're out to two thousand and twenty-seven. Uh if we have a good year, maybe we can bump one of those up uh next year. For now, we're gonna hold back. Um, the truck number five was the one that we've just uh done. Um, you'll see that grants transfers, that's because I got seven fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for the old truck, surprisingly.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so then we have the uh international, the two thousand and one Mac, eighty-eight Mac, which would be the next one. Actually, this doesn't represent it, but uh truck eight, um that's already spent, the eighty-five thousand. And literally right at eighty-five thousand, not a penny less, not a penny more. Um, the next one that would get fixed is the eighty-eight, which we're gonna hold back another year. Um, and then the loaders, that's that's hundred and seventy-one thousand in there. They're still working on that loader for the transfer station. Um, and then probably next year we'll work on uh breaking down the next one. Um, the backhoe, we have to start putting money in for it, not cheap equipment, unfortunately. Um, water, wedge, dump truck, we have yet to purchase. That just stays in there. Uh, and the Alamo flail mower, we have some money in there, but nothing else at this point.
What is that? The flail mower?
Yeah, that's what cut up all the stuff on the side of your roof.
Oh, yeah, lovely.
Yeah, big blade comes out of the machine. Yeah. It pretty much shreds it all up.
To be underneath.
Do not, do not. It's amazing what this thing does. It's scary.
A lot.
Yeah. Um, the hazardous tree removal, this is that same fifty thousand we saw on the operating side. Uh but that's gonna be covered by a low-sip grant.
Great.
And then we have mowing equipment and the smooth drum compact roller. Uh those items we hadn't purchased yet. I I still feel like um things are a little overpriced. There's still a high demand um in business. Economy is still doing well. If it slowed down a little, I think some of those costs would come down.
So we we have the money allocated for that.
Hmm.
Yeah, I see, okay.
Yep, ready to go.
And the public works mowing equipment would be like standing more along.
I would love to do that. Um, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to to put that, you know, I did not include it this year. Um, but I would like to add another guy at some point and start doing more lawn mowing ourselves.
Yeah, so just for the season.
Yeah, like if we had another guy, we'd be able to move some of the third-party contractors and keep it in-house, uh which I would love to see.
Yeah.
Um, I I think it would be a stretch to add another person to Public Works this year.
Yes, that's fine.
So I honestly, um, in a reval year, that stayed in front of mind. Um, that we don't want to make a big impact, so there was a couple other things, and we're gonna get to that now. So um, the fire department laid out, this is exactly what they've asked for uh for their replacement costs and budgeting. So we go down to Public Works Building Complex. Um, so this was the hundred thousand we had in from last year. We had thirty-nine left. Um, we do have the additional eighty thousand uh that we got in grants, uh so no more is being added to that. This is a big one that hasn't really been on our radar. Um, and this goes to the paving of town hall that was uh in Public Works that was achieved by getting a two hundred thousand or a hundred, yeah, two hundred thousand dollar steep grant. Um, we realized the diesel tank, the heating oil tank have to come out of the ground at Public Works in the next few years. Um, I've got some estimates, and it looks like it's gonna be right around that two hundred thousand dollar mark. So what this would do is take up the tanks uh and installation of new above-ground tanks. We would be increasing from a two thousand thou, two thousand gallon diesel tank to a six thousand gallon above-ground split. Two thousand would be uh regular fuel and four thousand would be diesel.
Is there grab money possibly available for that?
I can't say that yet. Um, you know, grant season's coming up. Um, I will say that uh a lot of the infrastructure structure money, and I've been saying it before, I've said it to many of you, um they're based around transit. They're based around public water, public waste, um living along uh the coastline, Long Island Sound. There's a lot of grants. Um, the transit has a lot. We don't, we don't have transit. We don't have public water. We don't have public store. Um, and additionally, we're not a disadvantaged community. Um, so it takes us out of a lot.
Maybe there's EPA money? I mean, we are.
I'm gonna keep trying.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep trying. Just talking about the infrastructure and the grants as well in the industries. It it does favor uh other areas, uh bigger towns. Um, but you know what? I'm I'm still fighting for it. I'd like, I'd still like to see something with the local bridge program. Uh but nothing discussed as of now. Uh next line is the uh North Street Purchase, which has closed out this year. Um, just another ten thousand towards town hall building maintenance. There is uh, you know, forty-nine thousand before we can do that. Um, and that's completing the four bathrooms here. Uh which haven't been done, the rest of the fur of chairs, new chairs for out in uh out of this meeting room instead of those. The next one is also big. Um last year I was looking at getting the tennis court resurfaced. Um, and every estimate, if I could even get a tennis builder, tennis court builder out. Um, the the verdict was still the same. Um, we have a rubberized coating over an asphalt base. And over the years, the forty years or however it's been there, uh they've covered it many times, but the asphalt just will not hold another cover. It's just gonna continue to And over the years, the forty years or however it's been there, uh, they've covered it many times, but the asphalt just will not hold another cover. It's just gonna continue to uh, age, uh, quicker and it needs to really be built for the concrete base. It's a safety issue at this point, and I don't think it's something we can turn away from. Um, that's why I've included in the budget. We have assigned a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, LoSiP grant funds. Um, so with the forty thousand dollars we had, we're looking at seventy thousand dollars adding it to our budget. Uh, but other than closing them down and roping them off, I, I'm not sure what else to do. We have to continue to provide that.
High utilization of those.
Mm-hmm. Oh, there are people that are all in the summer.
Patrick, do we know how many people use the tennis courts?
How many people use it?
Yeah, what, what kind of usage is there?
Dozens, dozens, every day in the summer.
Uh-huh.
You know, the, the kids have their league on Monday night from booth. Um, they, one of our local, uh, parents started a, a league there for Monday afternoons after school. Um, there's instructors that go over there and teach people. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty utilized, I would say, a lot. Um, one of the bigger requests is if we redo it, can we have it double marked for pickleball and tennis?
Ah, that was my next question because, I, I mean, I wouldn't want to be near a pickleball court because they're a heck of a lot noisier. Um, just the nature of the paddles, et cetera, they're a lot noisier, I think, than, um, a tennis court.
Okay.
But I, yeah.
Just because the people that are playing are louder?
Uh, no, the actual equipment, it's sort of like a, it's a wiffle ball, right? It's more of a plasticky bonk um, as opposed to a nice little thunk from a tennis court softball.
Didn't know that at all. Yeah, that's, uh, I learned something. Uh, but yeah, there has been a request, cause I guess Washington has one. We only have the two courts. Um, I don't think it's right to take away either of them, but I think double market seems like a good alternative. Yeah, Bridgewater just added one. Also. Yes, that was the one that was good. Um, okay, and then, uh, Town Hall, Public Works Complex, uh, that's where you're seeing the grant money and all. Um, you know, no additional funds to the town, which is great. So the next line is Minor Memorial Library. That's your exterior that we were talking about.
Yeah, okay, got it.
So that's the thirty-eight thousand. Um, Senior Center Maintenance, um, fourteen thousand, oh twenty-eight, plus nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two in grants. And then Pearlburg Sherman, uh, Maintenance and Tech Upgrades, fifty-four thousand, six, uh, forty-eight, still there, nothing else added. Uh, to Health and Welfare, uh, we keep putting the five thousand in.
Patrick?
Go ahead.
Patrick, excuse me, I have another question. On, on the library and the exterior maintenance numbers, do we, given, I mean, my understanding is that the library has some sort of endowment. Is that correct?
Yes.
They do.
Okay. How much of the repairs or the maintenance or whatever at the library is, um, paid for by their endowment?
They use that interest off the, and I'm gonna try and say this is the best way I can. They're, they, that's an income line for them with their endowment.
Right.
So it offsets their expenses.
Yeah, it's.
So they're not touching their capital. Correct.
Okay.
So that interest that they make off that offsets their budget, which they presented to you guys. Basically, right? No, but it's, but they're, they're using, there, that's what there's, it's offsetting their operational costs.
Right.
So if we didn't have that, yes, the town would be responsible for a higher portion. I think the town covers a hundred percent of the exterior, right? Pretty much, yeah.
Are we on the building?
Yeah.
Uh, Ed, actually, that's kind of what I was getting at. I was trying to understand what is our responsibility as the town to maintain the building, et cetera, versus what they're contributing from, um, any income generated by their endowment?
Yeah, I, I think they're completely separate.
Right.
Um, and I don't think the endowment's big.
Yeah.
Can you remember?
I don't. I don't.
I think the one thing we don't do is we don't follow the driveway. We do.
We do.
I took that over last year.
Yeah.
To offset their operational costs.
Okay.
So that's why they also had a reduction in their operational costs.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we'd all love to see them, um, have the ability to raise more money, um, you know, with various activities and things, but it's kind of hard.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious, the, um, just how it was all accounted for. I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I remember, um, several years ago, we went, we went, Holly, I'm sure it was before you were on, through this, there, there's, um, there's a difference in understanding of what, um, the town's commitment to pay for the exterior, um, improvements. There's a, there, there were some written agreements, and help me here if you remember. Um, but there, there's a, a difference in understanding between, at that point, the leadership of the Board of Finance and the library about what, who was responsible for what. So the question you're asking, Holly, is, um, I think it, there's not, there's not an agreed-upon answer.
Yeah, Nanette, I, I did hear, like you're saying, back in the day when they, when they were proposing to build this library, that, that, again, I only heard this, that it was not gonna be a burden to the town.
Right.
Any of it. And now it is a slight burden, but it's money well spent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of evolved into what it is.
Yeah.
Is what, is what I understand. I don't think there's much of a written agreement anywhere. Right, Nanette? Is that?
No, no, I think that there were documents and everybody interpreted them differently, if I recall.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, and I think you're right, that, that it's, it's just kind of, it just, it kind of, it has evolved.
Yes.
But I, I would, I, I would also say that, um, um, the financial management of, um, with, with Pam and Cynthia, I mean, it's very, their finances are very carefully managed.
Absolutely, they are. Yeah. And they run a tight, very, very tight budget. Yeah. I don't think there's any money wasted, I can assure you. Yeah, I think we're all agreement, it's money very well spent. So if you, you know, whether you put it into this pile or that pile at the end, you know, I, I still look at it, probably the responsibility for the town, whether you called it this or called it that, would still be the same. Okay. Uh, so transfer station, we are gonna be ordering some new containers, but that's just a kind of revolving five thousand dollars that goes in it. Um, the next one is a capital request um, for a wheelchair-accessible van. So I had explained earlier that we have that Honda Odyssey, which is a six-passenger van um, that was purchased a few years ago. Um, and they do use that, but I know they take it to the town clerks' meetings and stuff like that, uh, but mostly it's for our senior transport. And we also have the bus, but the bus is our only wheelchair-accessible vehicle. So what they're asking for is a van like, uh, the size of a Honda Odyssey or a Sienna or whatever, Toyota Sienna. Something where you wouldn't, if you had somebody in a wheelchair, you can bring them around without taking the bus at eight miles to the gallon or whatever it gets and taking, you know, the bus out. So there, you know, it, it came as a, as a capital request for this year. Um, I offset it for two years, uh, because at the moment, we seem to be doing okay.
Patrick, can you, can you explain what you said, we seem to be doing okay, in that there's not a big need for it, or I, I don't quite understand?
I asked how many times someone asked for a vehicle that wasn't available in the last six months? And it was only once.
Oh. Good question to ask.
You know, I, I mean, I look at, at what does that peak look like? Um, you know, I, I could understand you'd save money in, in not taking the bus everywhere with a wheelchair person. Unfortunately, you know, situations change. Um, we did have somebody that was going to dialysis three times a week that was in a wheelchair. Uh, unfortunately, that person's passed away. So now there's a lot less strain on that, cause if you take that bus or that van three days a week for a four-hour procedure of dialysis, you know, let alone transport time either way, um, that ties up a large portion of the usage, especially like when it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday. You know, those are times that people want to get to the store. Now the bus is being utilized. So if we did run into that situation again, it would be helpful to have another smaller wheelchair vehicle. So then the bus could be used as a bus for multi-passenger.
Right.
The other thing to do that we had brought up and we had discussed at one point was modifying the Honda Odyssey uh, to be a wheelchair-accessible van, but then you would lose the six-passenger capacity capability for other things, if you only had four people, say.
Is that the kind of? Is this the kind of item that some generous citizen might contribute?
Absolutely. This town never seems to surprise me, but yeah, it could have been. It could be. But at this point, we're planning for it.
Well, you gotta make it known that it's a need that someone could fill.
Yeah, maybe put it in the weekly newsletter. Okay.
But if we don't, well, all right.
If we don't need it, we don't.
We'll need it, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you're right, Nanette. You could have the Bruce Pan's van. I, I wasn't volunteering.
You know, and I could, I mean, this is gonna be a two-year thing, so, you know, I could keep an eye out for a grant opportunity to, maybe a transportation grant. I haven't really looked for that. I mean, I'm looking for, you know, a lot of the, you know, if we could do something at, you know, Senior Center, or I'm looking at those physical repairs, but I could start looking for um, something, because I mean, our bus now is purchased with a grant.
Correct, with donations and a grant.
Yep.
And that, that bus is approaching ten years old, so.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, whether this money goes towards a new bus, transit bus to replace what we have now, or.
Kim, aren't there some restrictions on that bus because we use the grant money, that's, but you can't leave Connecticut?
Uh, those, those restrictions are, it was a lien on the DOT. When you, when you get a grant for one of these buses, it's a federal grant, so there's usually a lien on it by the DOT for five years. So you're very restricted in what you can use it for. However, um, you can't use a bus like this to go across state lines. You know, the bus is too big, first of all. Um, I think the DMV only allows a passenger and lower to, to go out of state, but this is a transit bus, it's the way it's registered. So it is only for transit within the state of Connecticut. You can't slap a municipal plate on it and take it out of state. And that's from the trooper in the DMV.
If I heard that they were maybe planning some trips to Hyde Park or, you know, things along the Hudson River that they couldn't do because of that.
Um, they used to be able to do that, um, but it becomes interstate commerce.
Yeah.
Um, hard transit used to, they used to be able to get hard transit to take them on trips like that, but they can't do it anymore. Um, you have to have a federal license in order to go across state lines and interstate commerce. They can rent a coach bus, which they're doing now.
Okay.
They're taking a bunch of people down to the New York Botanical Garden. And it's a twenty-three-passenger bus.
Right.
So it, it, it just takes a little bit more planning to do it that way. There's less liability for the town to take a bus like that out of state. Um, rather than us being the owners. We have no procedures either, you know. If we take one of our buses out of state, you know, what if the bus breaks down? What if somebody gets sick? What if, what if, what if?
Then how do you have a backup as opposed to?
We don't, we don't have those procedures in place.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and then my favorite topic, the last section down. Roads and bridges. Okay, so top line, Botsford Hill, that money got, uh, removed. That project is complete. Okay.
Yay.
I know, right? At thirty-four thousand, something like that, some ridiculously low-figure, wonderful, wonderful job. So, uh, the next four that you see, uh, Weekly, Shallies, Century, Grassy. So these are all gonna be paid by ARCA funding. So this is the money that we moved out of Squire Road since we got the steep grant for that, and now all our bridges next year are paid for. All four of those bridges are paid for.
Will be done this year.
They could be, yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna put it out, uh, assuming this budget is completed, but we'll see how many we get done. Uh, Davenport is, uh, a done, completed project. Um, the reason why we have the three hundred and fifty-two thousand is we are waiting for the state to cut the check. Everything's been done and everything's been approved at this point, and they pushed it along, but they keep giving us excuses and no check. Um, the next one is, is, you know, difficult. This is minor bridge. This is a, you know, one point eight million dollar project. Uh, this is the second installment. Um, and this is the one we're ready to do now. Um, this is a, a, a big bridge that's twenty-six feet in the ground. The next line is also somewhat big. Um, we did get the hundred percent reimbursement on Weller's Bridge, uh, but we do have to have a working fund. Um, they gave us direction that we need one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand by September of two thousand and twenty-four. That being said, we've split it up into two years of fifty, uh, five hundred and sixty-five thousand each year, actually, this year, uh, and then next year as well. Um, because this is a hundred percent funded, all of this money is coming back. But this is to get us, this is federal funding, so it comes right away, so we only have to tier it in steps, so we'll get reimbursement along the way. Um, was, that number was based on their direction. So, yes, we're spending one point one, but that money is all coming back.
How does that? Uh, how does that actually affect the budget? I mean, the money we have to raise every year?
Well, this money would just go back into, it's, there's no other funds that are being used like TARA or anything else, it's a hundred percent funded. So this literally money that we get back would go right back into our undesignated fund balance, so you would see that increase on the following year. So you're gonna see that in two thousand and twenty-five. And then by then, we're gonna need to, what?
So timing-wise, you, you have to pay for it and raise the money in twenty-four?
Well, the good news is, it was, it's, it, overall, it's gonna be over a five million, probably six million dollar bridge. We only have to come up with our installment, basically like an installment payment, so then we can pay our contractors and then get reimbursed and then pay contractors and get reimbursed as a step program through the process. But then at the end, yes, we will have an additional one point one five four undesigned.
So, to continue, to continue this conversation that Bruce started, it, it basically is, um, what's the, um, in accounting-wise, what's the right way to, to be ma- to be treating this money because it's not really money we have to raise. It's not new money because we're gonna get it back. So, it, it's almost like a revolving fund or a bridge loan. Um, so do we put it in the budget as money we have to raise?
Well, the money's going out for a period of time. We have to show that, and I assume we have a receivable.
Yep.
On the other side. Due from the government.
Yep. So we will be paid, unlike the local bridge program that pays it at the end, whenever they decide to pay it, this would be paid throughout the project. So this is based on the guidance from the state who's engineering this and the guidance from the federal bridge program.
Right.
So we have to have basically a working fund.
But can we use, can, can we use the undesignated fund? Uh, you know, in and out of that, rather than?
No, because you're, it, it has to be a designated fund. I mean, it has to be designated for Weller's Bridge, so it wouldn't just be like a working checkbook, because we have an overage. That's what those funds are used for.
Well, can we take it out of the undesignated fund and say designated for Weller's Bridge? Right.
Basically, that's what we're doing, ultimately. And we're gonna, when we get to, we're gonna get to. Basically, that's what we're doing ultimately, and we're gonna, when we get to, we're gonna get to that part next. Uh, we're gonna touch on mill rate in a little bit, uh, because whatever is not used of that. Offsets our budget the next year.
Okay, but when you look at it now in the budget, it looks, it doesn't look any different in terms of the. The quote, kind of money it is than money we have to raise because we're gonna have, we're gonna have to spend it. And so if we're counting it in the budget as money that has to go. Uh, we have to raise it and it, so it has to go into the mill rate. I guess, I guess the question is, is, are, are, is that the best way for us to be treating it? If this is not money that we actually have to go out and raise? I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if Rico has the right answer, but I, I. It doesn't seem to me that this is money that we need. To tax people to raise if it's money that we're basically just borrowing from. The undesignedated fund.
No, it, it is, it is, we, we need it for cash flow purposes in order to start this project, Nanette. So, so we have to have X amount of dollars designated for this bridge project. By September of twenty four, and this is the recommendation that we were given.
Right.
So, so we have to have this money put aside. They're gonna ask us, do we have this money?
Yep.
Put aside for this project.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the need to put it aside. It's just a question of where we're putting it aside from. And therefore whether it should be another million dollars that we have to raise. Um, from the mill rate, if it's really not, if it's really not money we're gonna spend. I don't know.
Well, I, I, I would argue.
We are going to spend.
Yeah, we are gonna spend it, but I would also argue when this project is done, we will have to repave Weller's Bridge. We will have to do other things that we've held back on this year because of this.
You know, theoretically, this money will be coming out of the general fund this year in this budget, but once the bridge is complete. We get all this money back, it's gonna go back into the, you know, we'll transfer it all back.
So it'll have no effect on the mill rate?
Into the, uh, into the general fund, into the, the fund balance.
But it will have an effect on the mill rate because we, we need to raise the money this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of money right now, yeah.
So we will do a buy down, right?
But that's the very question. I mean, the buy down is in effect, uh, borrowing it from the undesignedated fund, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So if we're spending money we already have, why do we have to raise it again?
Because in the undesignedated fund, if you go back to the explanation of the undesignedated fund. You know, those are not designated funds and we still need to have, based on the state guidance, three months. In of, you know, of operating budget, so in effect, the undesignedated fund balance is assigned to its own.
Talking apples and oranges here. I don't think we're having the same conversation.
Oh. When we get, when we get to that part though, well, no, that's, that's okay.
I think we are, Nanette, I think we are, I think, let me put, let me say it differently. If we're gonna raise the taxes or take it out of the mill rate this year. Next year or the year after, we can reduce the, take it, reduce the mill rate as we get that reimbursed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, yes, in two years.
So overall.
Yes.
Oh, i- it's, it's a timing problem.
Correct.
Yeah.
National problem, right.
But you'll see when we get to that part of the, of Patrick's presentation. Suggests to buy it out like we do every year. And we, you know, whatever we decide to do, we'll be buying down the budget with that reserve, that reserve fund. So, you know, almost technically, yeah, we'll be buying it down, right Patrick? Yeah, so. It's, it's what we decide to do as a group.
Yeah, okay.
All right, um. Next, uh, Squire Road also complete. Um, and then there was just the, there's no mother, other funds, just the, uh, grants for road chip sealing and. Uh, Culver's study, sorry. All right, um, let's go to the revenue side of this. Which is tab two. Right, tab two? I'm sorry. Tab four, my apologies. Okay, and this is a breakdown of the other side of it. Um, so we do have a, uh, actually money that comes back from region twelve. The estimation from region twelve, so it's gonna be three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, from our town fund balance, uh, miscellaneous, state and taxes. Uh, and we'll get into that fund balance later. Um, these are conveyance fees, the next line, building, transfer, recreation, land use permits. And some are more than others. Uh, we also take, uh, income from, so you'll see the senior center programs. This is the offset number from the operating side. Uh, the ambulance association gives us money, uh, for money that they collect through insurance. The cell phone tower is, uh, revenue. Um, and then, you know, other opportunities are rent and other telecom properties.
This year, we were, this year, we were down thirty five thousand dollars in real estate's conveyance tax and fees, is that right? Compared to our budget, or is that, that's kind of a timing problem?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Things slow down.
There's not.
These are full, these are not to date, these are full year estimates.
Correct. That, this is not like the other line, correct? It's not an actual number, this is estimated, projected. Yep. But houses stopped selling, we, we've gone through that big boom. And then now things have dried up.
And what's happening, I just sort of observing it, we, we didn't anticipate it.
Correct. Um, and then, uh, then there's just some other grant property relief, uh, low SIP. Uh, for hazards, few removals, all added in. So the moral of the story at the end of the day, um, we're currently at a fifteen point two five mill rate. Net grand list. Eight hundred forty nine million, four sixty eight, seven seventy. Uh, the actual increase, um, of value was twenty two point seven six. Therefore, we are looking at or proposing, uh, twelve point seven five. And this is ninety, ninety eight point eight.
The headline, I'm just thinking of the headlines, the headlines are, budget is up, what, four percent?
Three point, yes.
Um, mill rate is down, whatever that percentage is. Average effect on taxpayers is. X. But is X?
I guess we could get that number from the tax collector.
I mean, I'm just thinking, that's what, if I were writing the newspaper article, that's what I would write.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should be able to answer that question.
I mean, it's. I, I understand what you're saying. It's tough to say because there's, there's a billion, million variables, you know, especially from the assessment side. But there has to be an.
Well, I, I. It's, every taxpayer is gonna be different. I mean, I went, I, I showed you, I made some calculations. And it's, it's enormous difference percentage wise on, on. So it's on the effect on the, uh, appraisal, new appraisal.
Well, the mill rate reduction percent is at twelve point seven five is sixteen point three nine.
Okay. The budget's up three point eight percent, the, the mill rate is down sixteen.
Point three nine.
Point three nine percent. That works out on average, on average. To what effect on people's taxes?
So the way that you receive is, people are not gonna care about either the mill rate or the assessment. They're gonna care about whether their taxes went up or not.
Right. And, and it's gonna vary, I understand it's gonna vary for everybody depending on what kind of assessment they have.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think we need to be able to have a couple of different scenarios. So the people, yeah, um, people will have some sense of. What, that's the only number that really matters to people. And.
I would go a step further, Nanette. I think you can draw a graph saying, if you're, you know, if you're. If your assessment went, and I think, uh, Kim had made this point, if your assessment went up only five percent. We're gonna have a reduction of taxes of Y, Y percent. If it went up thirty percent, you're gonna have an increase of Z percent. I think you could draw, I think there's a mathematical formula here that just will tell you, based on what your percentage. Increases of your assessment.
So we're looking for the average increase per household. Is that only real estate?
Well, we did, we did come up with that and, and that was thirty two percent was the average. Assessment increase for taxable residential real estate. It was thirty percent overall, commercial and residential real estate.
So then what's that?
I think the average assessment. Average new assessment is five hundred sixty nine thousand. This is all based on reporting from the assessment.
Yeah, so it's, so a thirty two percent increase, how much is your taxes? How much are your taxes going?
How much do I come up?
No, but you can't, what's your?
That's an average, though.
No.
You know, we can come up with.
But I'm saying, you can, you can graph for any, for every percentage change.
Oh, sure.
It's gotta be just a mathematical calculation.
But I wonder if that's misleading though, because you're gonna say you're, you know, you're, if you're, like mine went up. It's gonna go up like two hundred dollars or something, you know, it's a nominal, it's a small house, I don't pay much taxes. But if we put it out there, that's the average is gonna go up four hundred dollars, now people are gonna, is that misleading and confusing?
No, I, I didn't say put out four hundred, put out what percent, what percent, well, okay, you could put it, you could put out. Yeah, well, the four hundred, clearly the dollars depend on where you are in total dollars.
No, but you could do it as an average home value.
That's what I was gonna say.
Average home value.
Or median.
Based on the average increase. Could give us an average.
What was the median assessment I gave you? I think it's four hundred twenty one thousand.
Yeah.
Median.
Yeah, so just maybe do.
But, but that, but you have to have another number, which is what percentage increase was there?
On real estate is thirty two.
Okay, so the four twenty, so the four twenty one median was that, you know, that's a hundred and thirty two percent of what it was last year? I mean, we don't have to spend, you know, spending too much time probably right now on this, but I do think. That we have to find some way to communicate.
Another medium, okay.
This effect.
That's a great point. So if you went to tab five. That's your mill rate scenarios.
This is where we'd see the different scenarios for the buy downs.
Correct. So right now, up at the top in the orange section. Our estimated fund balance as of six thirty two thousand twenty two is three million, four sixty one. Based on our budget of being twelve million, two seventy one, um, three months at one million, twenty two thousand per month. We would need to reserve, uh, in guidance, three months, which is three million, sixty seven, eight forty two. Leaving us approximately three hundred and ninety three thousand, well, three ninety three, three fifty eight. That's where we came up with. Our scenario at twelve point seven five, if you're looking at that, so on that, that's the second line down. That's the variable that changes the rate.
So that second green line.
Second green line.
If we use that dollar figure.
That's what you're.
At that mill rate. But, but you're saying in order to stay at the recommended, what is it?
Three months, so if you take, so if you take the twelve, that's because that doesn't change, twelve million, two thirty one, one sixty six. Divided by twelve is one million, twenty two thousand, six fourteen. Times three months, that's your difference.
They get to the twelve point seven five?
Is it, is it three ninety three?
Again, well, again, that's the, in order to hit twelve point seven five. We're taking three hundred and ninety one, nine eighty two, if you look at that second line down. Bill, that's the number that's changing in every mill rate scenario.
Yes.
Looks like it says three fifty one, Patrick, what's on the screen?
I have a different copy. Here.
I have three ninety one, nine eighty.
At twelve seven five?
Yeah.
Which one, what is it supposed to be? What is the about, what?
I got three fifty one.
He's got the old copy. Sorry.
What?
Take care of that. Thank you.
You do, you do have, you do have them because I gave her the new copies.
All right, so it's a three ninety one, nine eighty two.
Correct.
Would bring our fund balance down to three million.
Three, well, I did it reverse.
And, and Kim, you actually had, um, a number for the expected fund balance at six thirty twenty twenty three, right?
Yeah.
That's not, that's different than the three, four, sixty one.
Right, that is.
That's, that's based on.
That's from June thirty twenty two. That's just a pure estimate.
This is, this is the important number. No, three months is three thousand sixty seven. Three thousand, zero, six, seven, eight, four, two.
Only three number?
I had that in my email.
Okay, I'm gonna explain it just so everybody gets on that, so.
That's three million.
From our total budget, twelve million, two seventy one, three sixty nine, divide that by twelve months. For our three months, so, you know, our, our, to run our town. Per month is one million, twenty two thousand, six fourteen. So if we were to have three months reserved, it's three million, sixty seven thousand, eight forty two. Leaving us a balance from the fund balance of a working capital that we can use. Three hundred ninety three, three fifty eight.
Is that based on the six thirty twenty three estimate?
Six thirty, well.
No, they're going on the twenty two, they're going on, whoa.
Yeah, but that's not, but it's a. You estimated, Kim, uh, three million, seven oh six. For the fund balance at twenty, six thirty twenty three.
Correct.
So that's the, that's what we ought to really be working against, isn't it?
Yeah, either one, it doesn't matter. I, I mean, it just depends on how much you wanna buy down on it.
Right, but it's a three hundred thousand dollar difference in starting.
So what is the actual unassigned balance?
That is it right there. Believe I sent that, that fund balance report to everyone.
But that was last June.
Potentially, yeah, but we still have to get through this fiscal year before we know what the actual number is.
Right, right.
That's an estimate, so we can guess.
So I did, so I did an estimate, I believe I sent it to everybody.
Okay.
Three point seven.
Three point seven.
Nine.
So yeah, you could use that. And then you'd have a lower mill rate.
Yes, that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all. Yeah, so that's all. That's all the decisions we can uh, when we meet next, we'll propose this to the town, how we would like to present it. Yep, for the budget hearing on the twenty fourth, so that's what it.
Well, and it's also assumes we we're not gonna make any changes.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, so just to batten down the hatches, we, our next meeting is what date?
Tuesday eighteen.
This is the eighteen.
And then the budget hearing is Monday the twenty fourth.
Okay. Um, so we need to sharpen our pencils before the eighteen and really get down to brass tacks. I think I think to Nanette's original point, we do need to come up with some dollars, assign some dollars to creating procedures. Just looking over all of our universe here in town hall. There's the will to do it. We just have to put some money behind it. Um, so that's one change I would like to see. I don't know, do we wanna throw in a, an amount of say twenty twenty five thousand?
I'd like, I'd like us to talk about increasing the four percent increases to five percent.
And that's all stuff that we can, now that we, are you done, Patrick? I've done, yeah, no, I, this is. Yeah, so this is good. It'll give us all a week to just kinda think about things.
A lot of information.
And then, and then on next, no, you did a great job. And then, um, you know, next Tuesday. We, you know, we all have our own input on, yeah, on things we might wanna add more to or take away. But at the end of the meeting, we really should have our 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 numbers lined up for for the hearing. All right.
Can we go through again what's gonna happen next week? So um Jimmy's gonna come and talk about the computer budget. The budget, the school board people are gonna come back and then we're gonna go into executive session for what?
Talk about uh specific personnel increases. That I can't talk about in public without executive session. I can talk globally. I can't talk about people specifically.
Right. I um I I guess I thought I had seen on the agenda that we were gonna have executive session tonight. Um, so.
It was kinda put there as a placeholder.
Okay.
Baseball.
So, so.
Cause it's a special meeting.
Yeah, so we can't change it. I mean, there is something that I that I would really like to talk about that I'm feeling awkward talking about not in an executive session. And I don't know what to do with that.
And we, can it be discussed next week? When we get, we dive more into it? Truly got a call from Gail, correct? Did I, what did she say?
Uh, as as, and that points out, I mean, the agenda does say executive session.
Okay, can I?
But, yeah.
Okay, the executive session was put in as a placeholder in case you guys got through everything tonight. Um, since then, we actually used our description as of last year as executive session to discuss the budget. Uh, we have had further guidance from Gail. And Gail would like it to say personnel or other things. She wants it to be more specific. So.
Just to avoid any FOIA issues, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so that's what's going on there.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just, we're, we're a little pressed for time now because we we lost a meeting. And I'm just trying to figure out how um um, we get this all done next. I I, never mind, never mind. I I I I'm a little confused about um, how to raise this issue, which will come up next. Can't we just go into executive session for five minutes?
The town attorney called our secretary and told us not to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's um am I correct?
Um, I actually, she spoke to Patrick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I spoke to her earlier about another FOIA issue today.
We didn't assign the topic before we were gonna talk about an executive session.
They they the topic of budget two thousand twenty.
It's too general.
Is too general, according to her.
Okay, Nanette, we seem to be frustrated just procedurally here.
Yeah. Okay.
This was never an issue before, so.
And I can suggest next week when you go into executive session, you will be, except Patrick brought up some personnel issues. Um, if you wanna, along those lines, and if you wanna send over an email to add with something more the topic to be presented during executive session.
I'll definitely put it on the.
We'll add that to the personnel.
All right.
All right, or or we can talk about it in the next couple of days if you'd like, however you wanna handle it, Nanette.
Yeah, that's fine. And and why don't you and I talk about it?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Nanette. Thank you. Any uh, can I add any other business? But does anybody have any other thing they wanna talk about in the budget before we recess?
Well, I would just like to, um, at a, you know, praise Bruce. I think he really helped us nail things down. At the same time, I I I love the way this was constructed because I really do think it's conservative. And I think now that we've gotten behind the numbers and we've gotten into the weeds, we can spend this next little while individually thinking about.
Yeah, that was the goal.
Yeah, which is fantastic. So we've got a really good sense of things now, but I do like the idea of you know, projecting out or, you know, can we add, you know, more money in terms of the buy down? Um, we don't know.
And you can still ask questions of us, just to roll this out now it's formally presented.
This is just a template.
Yeah, it's great. It's very helpful, very helpful, yeah. I think you need to scrap the bathrooms altogether, though. You're already running in there.
All right, any, any other uh business regarding the budget for tonight? Want to adjourn?
Still moved?
If you're all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. I'll see you Tuesday.